A question of how many were there? There's many homes that are on the 51.
That's, 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 you know, I was, I was buying, I was looking in Korea especially because we're building a unit for the hospital for live-ins for people to come in.
And they couldn't live there with the people who were there.
Yeah, over in South Dakota. So, uh, so what they were doing is-
Recording in progress.
All right.
Yeah.
Great.
I saw her.
Um, so recorder's on, we're good with that. All right. And, um, we'll call the order, the zoning commission regular meeting on the fourth of November at seven oh six in the evening. Um, this meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes only and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. Uh, please call the roll.
Arzulo.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Crew.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Rubel.
Here.
Arline.
Here.
And the audience are trustee Augustine and trustee Kalina.
All right. Great. And, uh, to begin with, we'll, uh, has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes from October seventh, twenty twenty-one? And did anyone notice any changes? Need to be made.
I didn't.
I didn't. And for the record, I had a question on here, please confirm it. Um, alternate Arline was virtual or had an excused absence. He had an excused absence. On the October seventh, yes. And I believe that's what we have it listed as. So if there are no adjustments to be made, uh, entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October seventh.
So moved.
Moved by Manley, seconded by Schneider. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, no one opposed?
Nope. I'm gonna abstain, I wasn't here.
All right. Thank you. And now that goes around, um, so we don't have any, uh, new business that has, uh, come in front of us for this month. So we'll start with our, um, we'll start with the old business, which included our subject matter list. Um, I believe the subject matter list predominantly right now, we've been, um, kind of mulling over the short-term rentals. Um, and multi, multi-unit buildings in the township and what, if anything, should be done with those. As well, we had, um, we had previously brought up the possibility of an additional business district in the township. Um, as well as the text amendments, um, that would remove eighteen point five and eighteen point six I and J. Um, both of which have to do with screening on alternate energy, um, alternate energy supplies. Um, so to begin with, let's, um, kind of get back into our discussion regarding short-term rentals. As we spent a large portion of last month trying to figure that out and how we're gonna, uh, excuse me, how we're gonna define it. And, um, how we can put something into the regulation that makes sense. And follows along with the, the overall spirit of the resolution. Um, one of the things that came up last week, or I'm sorry, last month, was, uh, the question of how many, um, what is a short-term rental? And, um, one of the things that we are kind of grappling with is, okay, well, yeah, what is that definition? How do we define it? Um, someone had asked, uh, how many short-term rentals are there in the, uh, in the township? And the truth of the matter is, right now, what we're saying is potentially as many homes as there are in the township. Um, and really what we're trying to address are the Airbnb VRBO avenues of renting out a house or a property. And whether or not we need to put something into the, uh, resolution. And, um, originally this was brought up in a, I think it was a sidebar conversation, it might've been, um, a sidebar conversation between myself, uh, Mr. Fisher and Ms. Rubel. Um, and I'm very curious about Lindsay's input, um, specifically because you've dealt with this in, in some other, um, communities.
Yes, so I, um, worked with actually the LaGrange Township, um, zoning board. And I provided them proposed definitions with, which they ultimately, um, adopted.
Thanks, Chris. So I, this obviously is not written for Hinkley, i- in so far as I'm gonna read it as it pertains to the zoning districts. But what, what was proposed to LaGrange and ultimately adopted is that the definition of a short-term rental is any dwelling unit, structure, or other lodging unit that is leased, let, or rented to any person for sleeping or overnight accommodation for less than thirty consecutive days. And this is where it doesn't apply to Hinkley, obviously, at this point. In the R1 or A districts, which are the, the residential one agricultural districts. Or those rentals commonly associated with Airbnb Incorporated, VRBO, or other online short-term, short-term rental affiliates. And again, I, I realize that this may not be a problem in Hinkley right now. But we're, we're looking at the fabric of what's changing in society. And this is going to be an issue at, at some point.
Do you know what the issue was in LaGrange? What, what sort of issues were being presented that made them want to tackle this topic?
Well, generally speaking, um, they, these sorts of rentals were kind of be, being used for, I'll call it party houses, for lack of a better term. So people rent it for the weekend, for example, Halloween weekend. I understand that this is a big crackdown weekend for VRBOs. Um, you rent it out, you have two hundred people there for a party, you trash the place. Um, it disturbs the neighbors. So maybe it might not affect us here in Hinkley quite as much. Um, but the other idea, um, that was affecting LaGrange was we have transient people coming in and out. And we have this zone as a residential neighborhood and it's being used like a hotel. Um, so especially, for example, in some of the homeowners associations I represent, um, we had no screening for who was coming in and out. We didn't know if there were sex offenders living there that would've otherwise been required to, to notify the neighbors by the county sheriff. Um, so LaGrange felt that those sorts of rentals were only appropriate in the business districts.
If you wouldn't mind, um-
Sure.
Introducing yourself, name.
Albert Velasquez, one nine seven nine Pine Ridge Trail. Since she's our subject matter expert against it, do you know how many Airbnbs there is in LaGrange?
Uh, I'm, I'm not aware of that.
There's one. I just looked it on Airbnb. There's one.
Now is that, um-
There's one. A day.
Okay, so-
So it could've been before, but we can, we can pull the data, I, I can pull the data for LaGrange, Pat, before the law was passed. And there's so many loopholes to that, that I'll tell you the thirty-day, I can just sign someone a lease, thirty-day lease, and let them break it any day of the lease. I get around your rule, it's fine. But again, one Airbnb in LaGrange right now still, even after they passed the law saying thirty-day. What we're missing is who's using them. It's residents, families that are using them here. The party situation isn't really happening in northeast Ohio. I know this because I know a lot of hosts in Ohio. And I don't have an Airbnb in Hinkley. But there's a lot of ways to get them out and Airbnb is now screening the parties out. Group sizes eliminating them, ages, they won't let certain ages book a large group. So it just seems like we're, why are we following LaGrange or whatever township when there's not a problem? And like trustee Augustine, have we had any issues with our short-term rentals? And we have four in our, our township right now, four. And it's, again, my Airbnbs that are not in this township, it's family members. I have someone who just checked in on the first, having procedures at the Cleveland Clinic for three months. They own a house in, in western Ohio, they own a house in Florida, they need to be here for the clinic, and they have family that can support their stay while they're here. The people before that, they stayed with us eighty-eight days, they're building a home in North Royalton, and they just needed a transitional area with their kids, their family. And generally speaking, my properties are in better shape now than they ever were when I was just doing a rental situation. I have landscapers, I have cleaners going in and out, so I'm, there's nothing ever that becomes an issue that's health-wise in my places. Um, and Airbnb, it just, as soon as you provide a bad product, they give you a bad review and you're done. Like, once you drop below four, you can't even book, they won't let you book on the site. So again, I'm just, there's no issue here yet. It's just people renting their out, house out for minimum two or three nights. Usually people coming in for a wedding, when we have dropped our bookings, like, we have fifteen-day minimum stays at our places. Cause I don't want the hotel feeling down a residential street. And it's people here cause someone died and they're dealing with the estate, they're, you know? And that's the primarily what happens is the residents now, Lakewood, Cleveland, those are people coming into the city for two or three nights and, and they're leaving. The party houses, ten, ten to ten, you know, we had Seven Hills is the big one, it's a national story. Kids threw a party there, the police showed up, they trashed the whole house. What never gets followed up on is the Airbnb rebuilt the entire house. Their insurance is up to a million dollars to repair a house if, if something happens. So I just, again, we're attacking something that really isn't an issue. We still haven't had one police call to one. So, and it's, it's attacking the people of Hinkley, like, their family members are coming and staying here. And there's no other option in Hinkley for someone to stay when they have families here, right? There's no hotel, there's no motel. It's people's family that come here for a wedding or whatever, and they want to stay as close as possible to the venue or their family members. So I, I just wanna, I'm concerned about immediately regulating something that isn't even an issue. Because our price point of our home, it doesn't allow you to do one-night rentals, you couldn't make any money out of it. So it's just, it's a natural barrier because same with Strongsville. The prices of the home drive the fact that you can't have very many of them because you can't make a profit. So, and the fact that our lots are so big here, you know, um, it, it keeps separation from the houses. So I, I, again, I don't know that following LaGrange, like, LaGrange doesn't have, we have the metro parks.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Sure.
I'm here for a dialogue, okay?
Limited time. I understand that, but it's very vague when you're saying you're discussing-
Wait, wait, wait. You've now taken up almost three and a half to four minutes.
And we, we're in a meeting sort of so we can discuss this, okay?
And, and I hate to be rude about this.
No, it's all right. I'm, I'm- I can take it.
What you've said, okay? And I'm confused. So why don't you answer my questions instead of asking questions?
Absolutely.
Okay? My question is, who's Airbnb? Airbnb, who are they?
Their booking site.
Okay, so therefore it's a- It's a, wait, it's a separate person, a brokerage company, that you're going through to rent your house.
Just like any other company we use, like Amazon, they're a brokerage company.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay.
Okay.
I understand that, okay? So what I'm looking at then is actually, you're putting up your house, the people are using it as a business then-
Right.
To, to augment their rent, their mortgage, whatever it is. Or they can't afford to live there or the houses are too expensive.
Okay?
That's not what we're dealing with. We're dealing with, uh, people that, when they rent it, the police don't know that it's a rental. Okay? If something happens, is it the homeowner? They're not, and there's no log or anything, so is it the homeowner that they go to? Is it the, the people that rent it they go to? Do they go to Airbnb? This is what we are concerned with also.
The police show up to the problem and solve the problem.
I didn't ask a question.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I'm not here for dialogue.
No, it's okay.
I'm trying to explain what we're looking at.
It's very vague that you're having discussions and there's not even a, a description of what you're proposing to do.
That's why we're having this meeting.
And that's why I'm showing up. Right. Right, because it's vague, what you're wanting to do. The restrictions, it immediately feels like you're looking for restrictions where there's no problem.
That's what I'm getting to.
Right.
Well, you said that at the last meeting.
Right.
We're not looking for restrictions.
Okay.
You say we're looking for restrictions, and I pardon, I pardon the chairman for being a little bit, but no. We're, like I says, we're not here for dialogue, we're here so we can learn, to look to see exactly what the zoning needs to be or not be. Okay? What needs to be put in, eliminated, or not put in? Okay? That's our job. Okay?
Okay.
Okay? We're not here to, to say we don't want it, we're trying to get the definition of what it's all about and what we're doing with it. Okay? That's what we're, we're doing. Okay? We understand a little bit now more of what you want, but can we continue our meeting now? You've answered my question, okay? It's a business being operated, you're renting out your house, somebody else is a brokerage, that's cool. Okay? Whether it's two days, three days, thirty days, that's all we need to know, so we can discuss this more. Okay? I thank you for your input. Okay?
Yeah. And, go ahead. Next.
You done? Yeah, I'm done, sure.
Uh, so you're on the record basically as saying there's no problem, so go move on to something else, we don't need to do this now.
I, I wouldn't say that, that's on the record, I mean, there's, there's the tax revenue you could be collecting from this. Like, we're not even looking at the luxury tax, you could charge for every state, Airbnb would just send the township a check.
I'm not sure we can as a township, I, we're-
Well, and, and I'm not a lawyer, no, no, but I have other Airbnbs where they charge the, the-
Understand.
The hotel tax basically, or lodging tax. And that's a revenue that the township could get to maybe solve our firehouse problem. You know, now for, for Airbnbs, it might only be a couple thousand a year. But it's something that's functioning, isn't an issue, but you're right, there is no regulation to it. But the initial response is to, um, have a discussion about another township that completely, it kills, it kills it. Now, I can still operate under a thirty-day mandate, I, I, it's profitable. And you're not gonna get what you want, which, cause it sounds like the, what, you're trying to regulate it out.
What is what we want?
I don't know, but you're being very vague when you're, we're, we're having discussions, so you didn't have a discussion at all about short-term rentals? Cause she was gone last time, last, I'm assuming she is the female that was missing, that you couldn't have a discussion. Now, if you're having discussions behind closed doors, then that's a whole different-
We're not having discussions.
Okay, then what was actually discussed then? Cause it was very vague. If you read the minutes, you didn't ask-
Arzulo, I want to make a point of order because I don't believe that you asked for public comment yet. So I, I would ask that you make a ruling on a point of order that we get through the board's discussion.
Sure. Okay. Sounds great. Yep. And we'll continue our conversation, if you have more questions, feel free to raise your hand.
Sure.
You can be addressed. Mr. Fisher, you need a-
Well, I just wanted to point out, you know, I think that the, one of the things that he, he stated was, we're trying to provide restrictions. And I don't even know that under our current zoning regulation, Airbnbs are allowed. It, our definition of a dwelling is any building which is wholly or primarily used for residential purposes by one or more human occupants. In order to get an Airbnb into a residential district, you would have to say that that is being primarily used as a residential purpose. I don't know if I would say that an Airbnb is necessarily a residential purpose. So at the end of this, whenever we work through this and figure out what we want, want to do, we might actually incorporate a definition that then enables Airbnbs to be within a residential district. Or at least clarifies what is meant by a residential purpose. Because that's our definition right now. That's what enables something to be in a residential district or not. And so, uh, the, the premise that Airbnbs are allowed under the current regulations, I think is questionable.
Thank you. Um, as we, as we look at the idea of an Airbnb, um, I think what we do need to figure out is, A, do we look at it, I mean, it's not even do we look at it, it is a business. Do we look at a short-term rental as a permissible business in a residential district? I think that's, that's really the, the crux of the, of the conversation. That we need to look at is, okay, do we allow businesses in homes currently?
Yes.
We do.
Yeah, sure.
Mm-hmm.
And, and there are-
Home-based occupations and approaches.
And then, if we're going to define a short-term rental versus a long-term rental, we need to determine, all right, what is considered short? Because again, this, these are, these are relative terms. So if you're saying short, all right, well, a week is long when you're trying to get through the workday. But it's really short when you're looking over the course of a lifetime, or the course of a mortgage. Um, so we really need to figure out, all right, what is that cutoff as to what's considered short-term versus long-term rental? And one of the things that I was contemplating also was, you know, honestly, to his point, if, if someone's coming into, to, for, for a weekend and they need a place to stay and you're on vacation and you want to rent it out to someone, is that something that we want to limit? Or is it based more along the, the turnover of how many times can it be turned over, in the course of thirty, thirty days or twelve months? How many times can it actually be rented out? So that it doesn't become a primary function of that residence? Is that now it is a short-term rental that lasts throughout the year? And these, these are kind of the questions that I'm struggling with on this one.
Man, if I could just, I'm sorry, if you mind, Mar-
No.
If I could just interject just a couple things here. So one is, um, this isn't a ninth district case, but the sixth district court of appeals in Ohio determine that even short-term rentals are technically a residential use unless they're otherwise limited by the township zoning code. So that's been determined in some capacity. So that's one of the reasons I thought it, prudent to bring it to your attention, um, in our discussions. Um, the second item would be, I also want the, the board to be aware that a lot of times when these issues are brought to my attention, um, for those of you who, who are looking for context, I, I've represented hundreds of condominium and homeowners associations throughout northern Ohio. So we often have issues with, um, these type of short-term rentals and a lot of my associations choose to, um, prohibit them. But it's not so much renting out the whole house, it's, we're gonna rent a room, or we're gonna rent our finished walkout basement all year long. So there's also that issue where what is a single-family residence is often going to be used as really a multi-family residence. And how do we, how do we regulate that? Um, and what, what impact is that having on our, um, services, that sort of thing?
You know, this is, this is something we've come up against in the past as far as single-family versus multifamily. And right now, the, the code is very clear that they're single-family homes. Where we struggle is the definition of what is a family. Um, and I think that kind of goes to, again, something that was brought up, I want to say, two, three months ago. Of, all right, well, what happens when an organization buys a home and puts multiple different people in it? Um, is that necessarily a single-family home or not? Um, and is it something that we want to or should include or exclude from, from the, from the resolution? When we're looking at it from the idea of- When we're looking at it from the idea of, let's say, you have a a finished basement, as you just said, and you rent it out to a niece or nephew that is, you know, they just moved out from Florida. Is that, is that still single family, isn't it? Are you renting it out? Does does that turn it into a business? Again, you said that, I think Sixth Circuit is, no, it's a, it's a residential use. So we need to really put something in the resolution that gives Tom or any inspector the opportunity to go out and really look at it and say, all right, you're either in line or you're not in line with what it is we're trying to establish. I do think part of this goes back to the fact that this is really a complaint driven system. If someone is renting out their home, their their finished basement, and there are no issues, then there are no issues. The resolution by and large is there for when there are issues that we can remedy them. Any thoughts on any of that, that stream of consciousness?
Well, you know, we talked about this quite a few months ago, and we came up with family being any kind of a designation that is a family, whether it's cousins, uncles, aunts, a relative of any sort that way. But to actually to rent it to somebody else that is not of of actually the family, okay? Therefore, it's no longer a single residence. Then you get involved in of whether or not there's going to be two addresses or not. Then you get involved in, in what is that the person's actual living condition for a year if they rent it by the year and stuff like that? You know, then you actually, you should be going to the post office and getting approval. Well, technically, here in Hinkley, you don't have two addresses or an A and B because we're single family residences. There's a lot more involved, I think, that people don't realize than just, I'm going to rent out my unit, make a couple bucks. Okay, and it is a business, no matter which way. And whether it's a business being run out of a brokerage house or whatever, it's a business being run by a external entity. Whereas a homeowner with his own business in his own house, being used as a portion of his home for the business, is completely different than somebody renting it to somebody else through a brokerage.
Well, well, I definitely agree with with that point of view. I mean, if the court is saying that, no, it's residential use, then it doesn't matter what I think if the court is saying that it's residential use.
This is not our court, though.
This is not your court, but they.
But it provides, but it provides case law.
Correct, yeah. It it gives us some sort of understanding of, all right, these are the guidelines that are being laid down. Now, to Lindsay's point, though, is if there's something in the resolution, then it becomes different.
Right, right. And, you know, if this was something that we wanted to consider adding a definition to, and we did want to consider allowing it in the residential, we could always stick it as one of the conditionally permitted uses within the residential, and at least then another set of eyes is is involved in this, namely the BZA, prior to, you know, the permit to the, to it being allowed.
And the neighbors would be getting notices in that case.
And having the opportunity to speak. I I I am kind of curious, and just with having the number of kids that I have and the kids in my neighborhood, how long can a sexual predator be in a residence without having to notify?
You know, I I honestly don't know, but being off the top of my head. I know once you establish residence, it's within thirty days, but other than, I'm not sure what counts as establishing residence under that.
I would think that would be a concerning loophole, I mean, when you think about it for me.
For me, it'd be very concerning. Absolutely, I mean, if they establish residence in A, but they get a P O box, and then bounce from residence to residence, that would be a little disconcerting for me.
I know some HOAs have it in their rules, Crystal Brook does, that they're not allowed to reside anywhere in that the division, subdivision. That's a.
You said they're not.
Anyone with a sexual predator.
Cannot reside with.
Cannot reside within the Crystal Brook subdivision. That was added after the development, or after the HOA was created, that was added afterwards. So some HOAs might have it, you know, in there.
And that might be a fix for those HOAs, but there are many homes in the township that are not. Part of me actually wonders about the legality of that addendum.
It was.
Oh, I can answer that.
It's probably. Go ahead.
I'm not purporting to give legal advice, so being a sexual offender is not a protected status.
Got it.
And if you can't prevent ownership, so somebody could buy within an association like that, but they would have to use it as a rental property, they wouldn't be permitted to reside there.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rubble, outside of La Grange, do you know of any other townships within Medina so far that have moved on this?
I don't know specific, I haven't really looked in our surrounding area. I only know that this was, you know, this is not a La Grange resolution that's always been there. This was, I had a homeowners association client where it was going to be nearly impossible for us to pass this sort of amendment. It was much easier for us to go through the township, and this is the language I wrote and proposed to be adopted.
What were some of the, or have have you seen any other frustrations with the the short term rentals, aside from the party houses and that kind of stuff?
It's, it's really, it comes down to a necessity that a lot of us feel that we need in our neighborhoods that we're mostly owner occupied. And some, some communities feel that it's not necessary that you're even just owner occupied, but having transient people in and out certainly undermines the the neighborhood feeling and and being able to know who's next door to you.
Well, shucks, you just look at what's going on across the district with the the gentleman driving by all the different neighborhoods, and he's not even staying there. Just driving through. What's that?
That's not, that's not relevant to this situation.
Well, I, I think there's, there's certainly some relevance.
No, based on the police knowledge that I have, there is no relevance to this situation with that.
Well, as a, as a parent in one of the neighborhoods that he cruises through, and I know that everyone in the neighborhood gets uneasy when there's someone who doesn't belong in the neighborhood, that certainly adds relevance to the conversation.
It's not relevant because the situation itself is perceived. There's no, there's no relevance to this specific sex offender's.
I'm not saying it's, he's.
Well, even a, even a conversation.
I'm saying a conver, what what I'm saying is, when you live in a close, in a, in a tight knit community, and there's someone that comes in that is not normally there, the parents, no matter who that person is, naturally become protective and start wondering, why is that person here? What are they doing in our development? What are they doing in our, in our environment?
Want to be sure that we're not having a conversation about that specific situation.
No, 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 no.
And sexual predator.
No, certainly not. Go ahead. Airbnb screens all guests and hosts on the national sex offender, county records, county criminal, terrorist watch list.
So understood, thank you, I appreciate that. Airbnb, VRBO, those are not the only sources.
They're ninety five percent of short term rentals in the country.
They are not the only sources, correct?
Correct.
All right, so if I want to put something out on Craigslist, I can rent out my place for three days to whoever I want because it's my place and I got an applicant on Craigslist. We need to provide something that provides that safety net.
Sure.
Go ahead. I think what I was trying to point out before, too, is because going through a brokerage house or somebody of that nature is, yeah, there is a a filter of some sort, okay? But we also have to look at the idea of, again, like you just brought up, when individual people start renting out their their properties, their houses, whatever, for this kind of thing, Craigslist, whatever, and that falls under a whole different venue, as far as I'm concerned, than with a brokerage house. And that's something we need to really look into also, so that when we, when we do look into exactly how we want to word it, it it pertains to both avenues, both the business avenue and the residential homeowner avenue. Okay, that's, I think that's sort of like you were getting to.
Okay. Just to be reclarifying.
I think it would definitely be worthwhile to dig in, have everyone on the team do a little bit of research into what regulations currently exist. Not just in, obviously, La Grange, we don't have anything. And I think it would be worthwhile to spend some time over the next month, review what exists, and see if we can't come together next month and and see if there's some verbiage that might make sense to start kicking around. Still need to identify, all right, what is it that we're trying to establish? Whether we want to limit, encourage?
Define?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I I'm probably the only one here that has ever thought about having a B and B. But I live on the metro parks, my property is primed for layovers for horse people coming through the area. I'm on the trail. You know, I've thought of the same thing, what what would it take to allow that to happen? I don't have a lot of neighbors, one on each side, that's it. But that, it's an interesting, it's an interesting topic, I'm glad we're discussing it, because it, you know, whether it's, you call it agritourism, or whether you call it, you know, a rental or business, those things, people look at different options for their property, so I'm glad we're looking at it. But I don't have one.
It's better if you do or don't.
I don't even rent my stalls.
At the moment.
And then one of the, the, the next topic we had were the multi unit buildings. I believe the intent behind that was to discuss if there should be any sort of verbiage surrounding multi unit buildings in the business district. Right now, I don't believe there is any as far as volume or anything along that, those lines.
In the business district?
I thought that this was pertaining to residential district and the idea of group homes. Wasn't that where that initially originated?
That in.
I I saw that the multi units were separated from the short term rentals because in the residential, there can't be multi unit buildings.
Well, I thought it also came from our discussion when Pride One, multi unit.
The senior living? Which is in, but again, that's in the business district.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
And that's why I think, I think it's specific to the business district, because outside of the business district, you can't have multi.
Right, undwelling, correct, yep, you're right.
And I don't know what kind of limits or if any limits. All I do know is that we don't have any sort of verbiage in the, in the resolution currently. And is there anything that we want to add? Is it something that we want to do? And if it's not, then we can strike it.
What would the purpose be here? For example, we have places that you may, we look the other way with the mother in law suites that really are, at least three or four of them I'm aware of, could be rent, could be rented out at some point in the future. Is that what we're talking about, or would that be concerning?
I mean, that, that would be.
I mean, while we're talking.
Nonconforming, that, that would be, that would be a clear zoning.
And I'm talking about a bedroom, a kitchen, a bathroom, and in many cases, even a small sitting room.
Yeah. Oh, well, I mean, there, there are plenty of residences within Hinkley that have
Yes.
a, a secondary kitchen and bath and a finished basement and.
We have mother in law suites at some point in time, could be small apartments.
And that's, that's also the reason that we struck mother in law or in law suites, not just mother in law, but in law suites from the, the subject list to begin with, is because once we start defining an in law suite or a family apartment or an extra space, it puts a crack in a pretty solid door that, right now, the door is single family dwelling. And if we start saying, all right, well, in these circumstances, it's okay, then you put in that crack that can slowly widen. And that's why that was originally struck from the subject list.
The situations, you know, these, these people are living there for nothing or next to nothing. What we're talking about is where somebody potentially could turn it into, at least what I'm talking about, into an apartment with a, an income stream.
Absolutely, and then as soon as we hear the complaint, they're no longer able to do it because it's, it's supposed to be a single family dwelling.
So I guess the question is, do you really want apartments or condominiums or?
Apartments are fine, as long as they're in the business, could be fine, as long as they're in the business district.
And they're on the second floor.
They're not in residential areas, I think this has been the whole thrust. I think one of the reasons why we struck the the mother in law suite or whatever you want to call it, in law suite, is because it's actually still a family member in a single family home. So, you know, once the people turn around and don't use it as a mother in law, or a in law person or cousin living there or nephew living there, then it becomes an actual rental and then it actually violates the existing code of a single residence. So that's why we don't want to label actually an in law suite or a mother in law suite, because it's actually a family member, which is part of a family. I think that's one of the reasoning we used the last time.
Correct.
And I guess my, my one follow up to that would be is with my house, we never used it as a nanny suite, but we have a two bedroom, one bath, kitchen and sitting room with a separate entrance. That it was, my understanding was always used as a nanny suite, so that would be prime real estate for short term rental and it'll, it'll be interesting to see how that sort of develops as, as time goes on.
Also, you know, just to make metric here, a lot of the houses here in a rural area township, okay? They, a lot of places have separate kitchens and extra bathrooms and stuff like that, because they actually do a lot of work not in their regular living location. I mean, let's face it, canning and all that kind of stuff that you would do normally, you know, you don't want that to get through the whole house or whatever, and you want to, you want to bring that stuff in and process it. Usually, that's in the basement. And things of that nature, now, does that constitute, because you have that in in law suite? No. I mean, because it could easily be removed, if not, you know, used later or the house sold or whatever, okay? So nothing really stops people from adding a lot of things in their houses that they want, you know? So, you know, I just wanted to bring that up, that doesn't necessarily mean a living condition, but yet it could be set up almost like a living condition.
Much the same way, a lot of folks have that in, in an outbuilding as well. Where it's a workshop that, hey, you know what, I'm out here, I want to have, I want it to be comfortable, I want to have a refrigerator, I want to have heat, air conditioning, what have you. It exists. But I think that's, that's a corollary to the conversation that we're, we started with, which is the multi unit buildings, which I believe we, we were talking about specifically in the business district. Now, if we don't want to put any sort of limitations on the number, I mean, the, the height is certainly limited. But we need to consider whether or not we want to put a a limit or a size limit on multi unit buildings based on the size of the property. Do we want? Do we want just a giant apartment complex? Do we, do we want something that is cluster homes? Do we want something that, I mean, what do we, as a, as a township, see going as a multi-unit building in the township? What makes sense?
So shouldn't that be with the strategic planning that they're doing, working on? So I'm not sure you're jumping the gun.
How much property do we have, available, potential property do we have available in the business district to do anything with?
Depending on the profitability of the project, quite a bit.
Yeah. I don't think we have as much as, you know, the warrants. I don't think we have as much as we might think we have. Thinking about the couple areas where their, where their business district is. You have to tear something down. There, I mean, which of course adds, I mean, and does happen, I appreciate that, but adds an incredible amount of dollars to the cost in this day and age, especially if there's some of the older stuff with asbestos and a few other things.
Were you considering the business district, dump, or like Ridge in 303, or are you considering 130?
130, 303, there's, there are really, oh yeah, I'm sorry.
It's my business district.
If you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium, introduce yourself, your address, and then we'll.
I'm Frank from Five River Road. I was just questioning, I'm Frank, Frank O'Reedy from Five River Road. I was just questioning where the business district is. What are we talking about? When you're saying there's land, I'm thinking 130th and 303. He's saying no land, now I'm thinking Ridge Road and 303. So I'm just trying to get my corners right. What do we consider in business?
So, so here's the map.
Okay.
The town center's right here in red. That's the district, district, that's the B2 district.
Okay.
There's also the area along the Brunswick line.
Yeah.
Business district. And then there's finally Buzzards Cove is a business district.
Gotcha, there's three.
So those are three. There's two districts, but there are three major pockets of business.
You also have Boston Road.
Yeah. Oh, sure, Boston and 130th, right? Okay, I didn't think of that.
So.
That's what I was trying to get my bearings right. When you said there was no room.
It's also worthwhile to consider the.
If you look at, there's space, there's places, but not a lot, unless you start tearing stuff down. Especially down, then it's quite 130th and.
Sure, sure. All right, that's all it says. Okay, thanks.
No problem. Thank you.
Our town center.
And I think it's also, one of the things, generally speaking, when, when I'm thinking about something like that, I'm also contemplating the, the industrial district. Because in the industrial area, if someone wanted to put, put up some, some apartments bordering the, the B2, or yeah, the business district up there, it wouldn't be far-fetched to think that someone would want to do that.
I wouldn't have been there.
And they could do that actually, because there is sewer. Yes, there's a sewer there, and it's not septic systems and what have you. And that's the big, big thing right now. I don't know how far down. I don't know how far down the water and sewer goes down, like 130th. But wherever it goes, you can almost say it's likely that it could even be rezoned to a business district if it's residential, to put in high-rises or apartments or anything like that.
High-rises, I think, yeah, would be.
To 34 foot, you know, like the double or triple, whatever.
Yeah. But you could certainly put in a complex if, if the water and sewer exists. You look lost in thought there, Mr. Fisher.
Digesting.
All right. So are the multi-unit buildings something that we want to maintain on the agenda? Or is it something that's worth striking and potentially revisiting in the future?
That's what I think, you just set it aside. I wouldn't throw it out, but I'd set it aside and revisit at some point. And again, the, the committee, the planning committee that's about to come together to decide how we want, think we want the township to develop, may address this.
So the, and trustee Augustine, the committee hasn't been appointed yet, correct?
No.
Okay.
Except for Mr. Manley.
Yeah. And do you have any idea when those meetings will begin?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
But if you make a list of topics that you think are relevant, we will certainly address them.
Okay. And that's certainly some homework that we all want to come back with in the, in the coming months of, all right, where, where are potential holes in the zoning resolution? That, is there something we can address? And, you know, I, I do think this, this multi-unit buildings is probably something we want on it. That, okay, what does the township want? And our, our role isn't necessarily to just make up new parts of the resolution. It's, all right, how do we take what the, what the township wants and create the body of work around that? And right now, I don't know what the township wants on multi, multi-unit. I, I lean one way, someone else might lean a different, you know?
Okay. If I might, I thought that two months ago, maybe it was three months ago, Ms. Ruble had also mentioned, and I think Ms. Long had brought this up, the discussion of group homes. And so I know Ms. Ruble had provided a new definition that she had used for a group home. I don't know if we want to.
I, you wouldn't mind. Merge those together.
Yeah, and, you know, and that's, that was also one of the things that we, we discussed, which was, okay, well, what happens when it is an organization as opposed to a person?
Right.
And they're bringing in any number of, of folks that clearly aren't from the same family, or maybe they have caregivers, or this, that, or the other, that aren't licensed or aren't overseen. It provides potential for problems.
So, so if it's not, hey, again, I, because we published this agenda, because multi-unit might have meant the other thing, I, maybe we just want to add it as a, this topic of discussion for the next meeting. I don't know how you want to proceed with that, or, or if you want Lindsay to provide some sort of introduction on that. But I know that that was a topic that we had at least wanted to explore in a bit more depth. See how our current definition is, and whether we need to make any notes to.
Yeah, Lindsay, if you wouldn't mind kind of running through the recap of, of the conversation that we had, and maybe expand upon it a little bit, so that the commission in general can kind of look at it and see, all right, is this something that we need to add, or is it something that can be lumped in?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the, the topic of conversation specifically was not trying to limit a situation where somebody lived in a home and had to have a caregiver, thank you, Andrew, I'm sorry, had to have a caregiver 24/7 and have people in and out. That wasn't the issue. We all understand that there's going to be health situations that arise as we all get older. That might be a necessity for a lot of us. I think the, the topic of conversation was more so when we have what is in one of the residential districts, what looks to be a single-family home, and we have multiple unrelated individuals who are living in that home, and there's actually a business that either owns the home or is renting out the home. And they are, it's a for-profit enterprise. They're renting this particular facility out and using it almost as a healthcare facility where they have caregivers in and out, sometimes many at a time. So not only do we have issues with as a business being run here because we're providing medical services, food and beverage, a lot of times is being made and consumed in mass quantities if there happen to be a lot of people living in that particular home. And also the, I'm sorry, I don't know if I mentioned this, but the parking situation. Not only do we have the caregivers who are parking there, but also visitors. And a lot of times, the individuals in, that might be in that particular type of home will have county transportation services, so there will be buses in and out. And sort of how is that handled? I know in my experience with some of my associations, the issue was it's being run like a business, but there's really no one overseeing the individuals who are supposed to be the caregivers, and they're not licensed. They're coming on site and sometimes engaging in illegal activity because they're not overseen by the government, they're not overseen by their supposed employers.
Are you speaking more so about, because they're not overseen, that it's, that it's a 501(c)(3) or something like that?
Correct. Mm-hmm. So.
It's a nonprofit, so it can't necessarily be classified as a business, even though it is definitely a business.
Well, yes, I, I would say even if it's a not, nonprofit corporation or a not-for-profit corporation, it's, it's nonetheless a corporation and still running a business. So that would be another issue for us to discuss. Do we put some sort of, I don't, we're not outlaw, not proposing to prohibit this sort of home necessarily in the township, but more so putting it in the business district, so it's not in that residential districts, especially if we're having multiple employees coming in day in and day out.
And we, we do have assisted living as a conditional use in the business district.
Right.
But within the residential, at least as a conditionally permitted use, we have institutions for human care, whatever that means. And then we also have, as an accessory use, adult family homes. And so I think that we need to work through potentially, what is this group home? Is it an adult family home? Is it a, you know, a conditional use? Or institution for human care? Or is it something different than either one of those two things?
And I believe that adult family homes are an accessory use. But not otherwise defined beyond just saying they're an adult.
Exactly.
Family home.
And same with institutions for human care. It's an undefined, yeah, thing, so. So we need to potentially add in what that definition is. If we're going to conditionally allow anything, we, we certainly need to have a definition. As well as determination as to where it can be. And I have a feeling that's going to be a.
I'm sorry, Mr. Marzullo, if I could just, just run through a proposed definition of the adult family home or group home.
Please.
And that would be any structure, building, residence, or place operated by a person or entity other than the residents of the structure, building, residence, or place in which three to 10 unrelated persons reside for a period of 24 hours or more, and which is used or intended to be used for the purposes of leasing rooms, providing meals, and/or providing personal services, personal care, supervision, and protective care, but not skilled nursing care, designed to assist residents to adjust to society and the community, except those foster family homes licensed by children and family service agencies.
You just came up with that, right?
I pulled from a lot of different places in coming up with that because it's a, an issue where we have to be careful with, with fair housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Even if, if, if that becomes the, the definition, is the institution for human care still a conditionally permitted use in the R1? Or R2, or any of the residential, or should it become a business, business district function?
So I almost think that you have to start with what is a definition, because until you define what something is, it's very hard to say where it should go. And so, you know, so we, we need to, i- is that distinct from a group home? Is it the same thing as a group home? And then, you know, if they're one and the same, does it make sense to have a group home in a residential? Does it make sense to have a group home in a residential, but make it as a conditional use again? Or does it make sense to put it as a business?
I agree. I think before we start, any, any kind of regulations, we should have definitions of each entity so we will understand on each one. And just for a point of exposure, whatever, I have, I did have a property that was used by a 501(c)(3). That was a battered women's shelter in Dayton. And, and don't forget though, Dayton's a corporation, it's a city, so it's all under different rules and regulations than a township. And I think a lot of people, they, they lose sight of that. They think they can go anywhere, do anything that they've done in the past. But no, there is definite regulations, whether it's in a city or in a township. And, and I did precede it after three years. I actually gave that property to the 501(c)(3). Okay? And, but it, it's, just like she said, it's a definition. It, right, basically, they followed it right by the law, by the rules. And they're involved with the government and everything, everything is on a, on an up and up kind of thing. So we may have to look into that, just in case something like that happens. Like, for instance, if somebody turns around and they pass away and they, they will their, their place to a nonprofit organization. I'm not going to say we should really have something in that, but we should take that in consideration that, you know, if it is in a residential, what are they going to do with it? How it would be looked at? I'm laughing, yes, we have a situation, it doesn't deal with people, but down the street where the art gallery and all that, that's, and those people that pass on, that belongs to the Cleveland Art Museum. And I was on a different board at the time, questioning that, how do we know what they're going to do with that, that it's in our best interest? Why wouldn't they open it up to something? So this might be something that, we have a potential situation.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. And there were a couple, I, I did receive an email from 350 Hinkley that they wanted to point out that they didn't notice on our old business agenda for this week, that the text amendment concerning the removal of 18.5 A&amp;J and 18.6, or I'm sorry, I&amp;J, and 18.6 I&amp;J fell off of the old business. That was the removal of screening from the alternative energy. And they were kind enough to point that out as something that we can put back on the, the business, as we always have next amendments that we're working on. As well was the, the conversation of working with the BZA, specifically on the, the, the potential for creation of a new business district. Whether or not all business districts, or the, the existing business district should all be in the exact same pool. And that's a conversation that I'd like to have, but first, I think it would be worthwhile to liaise with the BZA to get not just their input, but also to see what else they see in the resolution as something that we might need to address. What are the primary headaches that they had that are coming in front of them? So that we can make sure that we're taking, taking care of as much of this as we can. Any questions on any of that? No. Um. As far as the um, the takeaways for next month, again, the uh, if there are any subject matters that you don't see on the the agenda, I think it's worthwhile to uh, please create that list on an ongoing basis, keep bringing it in and see if there's uh more stuff we need to address. Um, the short-term rentals, we're going to work on uh definitions and getting uh some of the regulations that are in that are in surrounding areas. And by surrounding areas, I'm not just talking about um Ohio. I mean, we can go wherever we want, Google is uh pretty useful for that. If we can find um a wealth of definitions and a wealth of applications, we can mold and meld it together and and figure out what makes the most sense for our township. Cause we're not like anywhere else, so we're not going to be able to take it verbatim and apply. That's just not how it works. We've never done it that way and we're not about to start. Um, multi-unit buildings, it sounds like what the team's in agreement, we want to kind of hold off on that one until we get some sort of um, some sort of guidance from the um, the commission that's going to be uh looking at the comprehensive plan. Um, but then now we want to add in the group homes and um potentially adding in the piece of charitable ownership of homes and properties that we were just talking about, a 501(c)(3) having possession and how they're actually going to deal with it. Or the Cleveland Museum of Art.
Yeah.
Um, as far as the chairman's report, um, I did receive a couple of emails that uh I'll go through here. Um, one is uh, uh, this is from Nikki, Nikki Nup, and it says uh, "I absolutely support the zoning commission's exploration of the short-term rentals and multi-unit housing potential issues. It's plain common sense to be able to talk about issues before they potentially become a problem. There can be no harm in simply discussing them. Was hoping you could address three issues in the next meeting. I'd like there to be a discussion about the zoning commission member on the comprehensive plan audit steering committee when all members of the zoning commission are present, including alternates. I think it was great for Mr. Manley to step up, but I do feel that all the members should have been present to discuss the best fit for the committee. Personally, I think Ms. Rubel, a practicing real estate attorney, would be the best for the steering committee as her expertise could go a long way in helping the committee keep the legal interests of the township at the forefront. Can you please discuss what would happen if water and sewer were available in an R1 district and a developer or anyone really submitted a request to the township to have a large R1 lot or contiguous R1 lots all changed to R2s, essentially putting an R2 district inside an R1 district? I understand that R2 districts are limited to areas with water and sewer. So if the water and sewer creep into an R1 district, what is to prevent the R1s from being changed to R2s? I understand that a few years back, there was an application to create an R3 district on 303 for quote senior living PUD. Not sure why that application was denied, but it's an example of what I am asking, except without the creation of a new residential zoning district. Myself and others have researched the Redwood Falls plan, plans and see that from the beginning, January 2018, the plan all along has been to create an easement on Simoti's property and run water eastbound from the development to Ridge Road. Do you know what the township's reason for wanting water to be run to Ridge Road was? How did the easement come to be? Do you know what, if any, plans there are to run water on the easement? What about sewer? The easement is 20 feet in width, which seems too wide for only water. My understanding from reading the meeting minutes is that shortly after phase three, which included the developers 20 acres into the project, the zoning commission worked to implement two text changes. One, all homes in HOA must be accessible from the internal development streets. And two, no lot can be larger than four times the median lot size. Is that correct? Lastly, I see that Simoti was supposed to donate 10 acres to the HOA, yet he recently sold the property and the 20 acres. What am I missing? Did he not in fact donate those 10 acres? What happened to that? Uh, I know this is a lot, I appreciate your and the zoning commission's continued work. All right, let's go to um item number one. As far as uh Mr. Manley being on the comprehensive plan audit steering committee, Mr. Manley um volunteered, and I think Mr. Manley will do an outstanding job. Um, Ms. Rubel, I wouldn't even begin to say, hey, you should do this. It was a voluntary position, Mr. Manley volunteered, and I'm happy to have him.
I was just wondering, that of the board members, Mr. Manley was the only one that submitted an application on his own board for the steering committee.
Okay, thank you.
And I think he's been on four.
On it before.
Prior, was it, how many?
Yeah, three, three.
Three before. And you've been on the BZA.
Twenty-six years, right?
So I mean, the the wealth of knowledge that you bring to this committee, I think, will be tremendous.
Um, as far as the water and sewer, um, honestly, I I don't know, um. I I can't really speculate as to what would happen if if um water sewer crept into the R1. I will say that if someone wanted to rezone property to R2, um, they would have to submit a request to the zoning commission. Um, it's a long, very laborious process. And um, I I think it would be a pretty big ask to rezone R1 to R2.
And that's true of any, any zoning change, right? From a R to a business or any, anything, that's always going to be the case.
Yes, absolutely. Um, as far as the Redwood Falls plans, um, I don't know why the, why the township wanted the easement, or if the township wanted the easement.
I think that was the discussion, I thought it was for the school, because they weren't.
Can I interject? You want me to come back?
Yeah, please.
Based on my notes from the Medina County Planning Commission back in, I think it was November, December 2017, that was a recommendation that planning put in, that was not a township easement. We had nothing to do with that easement.
Okay, thank you. Um, as far as the the width of the easement, um, and whether or not it's going to be sewer, I, that is above my pay grade. Um, none of this stuff is anything that we would deal with on a regular basement or basis. Um, and as far as the HOA getting the 10 acres, um, the entire, my my understanding of this, um, and maybe trustee Kline, you can verify that my understanding is accurate. Um, the 20 acres is all part of the Redwood Falls HOA. The 10-acre easement is now in the um preserved land. It is still a 10-acre lot, but, or I'm sorry, a 20-acre lot, but 10 of those acres can never be developed. They remain wooded in perpetuity.
And and I thought that Mr. Schneider had brought this up maybe four or five meetings ago. And then the trustees, I don't remember who it was, trustee Burns?
Yes.
Looked into it and did confirm that the transfer of the property that needed to be transferred over was in fact transferred over. So that was all confirmed probably four or five meetings ago. And I'm sure it's in our minutes somewhere.
And ultimately, it remained one plat, uh, one 20-acre plat, because um it commands more value. Um. I think that addresses everything in that one.
Did they mention, didn't they mention about uh, something about the the 20 acres not actually being part of, but it is part of the um?
Yes.
And that's where we made our change if they were, when you read that. That's why we made the change so that anything to do with a development of that nature has to uh have uh entrance and exit, be it that development not off a different roadway. Okay? And this is the reasoning behind that, because everybody got confused of, well, this is over here, but that's over there and what have you. But he actually put the 20 acres into the development, but his access wasn't through the development. So that's why we made that change, so that makes it easy for everybody in the future. Okay? So that was one of the reactionary things we we came up with.
As as well as um, as as well as what the second point that was included, no lot can be larger than four times the median lot size. That was, that was another one. Both of those came out of, out of that one maneuver. Um, and there was one other email. Um, and this is again way over my pay grade, but I'll go through it. "Hi Matt, I was hoping that you could raise this at the next board meeting. I'm especially interested in Lisa's take on this." And I believe by Lisa, she means Lindsay's. Um, "I found two conservation easements recorded in 2019. I think they are for the conserved land in the Skyland Development. You would know better than me. I've attached both of the easements here. The easement is held by Stream and Wetland Preservation Group. I've never heard of them, not sure if you have. The executive director of this group is Travis Crane. You probably recognize that name, as he was the engineer hired for both the apartment project and the Skyland Development. I'm not an attorney, but it seems to me that someone who has a financial interest in a development should not be the head of the agency that holds the easement on that very development. Clearly, this represents a conflict of interest. As how can Crane truly hold accountability any easement violation when the likely violators are the people paying his fee? Stream and Wetland Preservation Group was incorporated in 2016 with Ohio Secretary of State, and in 2021, the business was canceled due to lack of business filings. I've attached those documents here. In any case, there is, in any case, there is any confusion as to whether or not this is correct. Travis Crane, I've attached his LinkedIn profile, which shows a business of his registered to the same addresses in corporation paperwork. Lastly, here's a link to the Facebook page for the group. By this time, you may not be shocked to learn that their last post was on December 25th, 2019, 20 days after the last easement was signed. The bulk of their posts was to promote a fundraiser held at Pride One Construction in Medina. The fundraiser aside, the preservation group clearly no longer exists. So who's monitoring the preserved land at Skyline? How can Crane be involved in holding this easement? I'm copying these other residents because I haven't had a chance to share this with them yet, but I am sure they will also want to know the zoning commission's thoughts on this. As always, thank you and the board for your service, Nikki." Um, so when this was, when I first heard about this, um, the um business being canceled is actually a moot point, because they did go back and file, and they are a a uh, an operating business at this point. Now, whether or not there's a conflict of interest in any way, um, I'm unaware. I, I'm not an attorney. Um, that's something that, yeah, we, we can, we can look at that, but it's also um, at this point, kind of moot, because it is something that has already happened. Um, as far as enforcing it, um, I, I don't believe that he's getting, or any organization is getting money from the HOA to preserve that property. Mr. Horst?
You read the legal documents, you'll, Jim Marston, 20 Carrow, um, you read the legal documents, the HOA pays that business entity a fee. And I'm sure they noticed if their fees were to stop, but they didn't seem to notice when they stopped to, when they ceased to exist. I mean, you're a smart guy. This, this does not look good. And why can't you have a third-party, uninvolved entity monitoring all these conservation easements? And not only Redwood, but wherever else you may have a conservation district. And what, what is the situation in the other conservation district? Do they have a business entity that monitors their compliance in maintaining those conservation districts? If so, who is it? How are they compensated? It's a bad look, believe me. Bad, bad, bad look. And the only reason they revived that business entity, because she pointed it out, and they were called out on it.
So I I can give a little bit of context to that. I'm the president of another one of the the um developments that are a part of a conservation easement. And our conservation easement specifies that it's, uh, shall be enforced by the HOA, and then it may be enforced by the township. And so what we do is anytime that there's a violation, uh, we'll send out a notice that says you've you've done something on the conservation land, please stop. Uh, we generally CC the zoning department so that they're aware of it as well. But generally speaking, we handle it internally ourselves at the HOA level, although the township does have the right to come in and also enforce the conservation easement. Um, I'm looking at the resolution right now. Oh, I was until my computer went out. Um, and the resolution says that the, that the owners of the restricted open space shall, in accordance with the provisions of the ORC, grant conservation easement to any of the entities listed in ORC, another section, provided that the provisions and the grantee of the conservation easement are acceptable to the township board of trustees. So the township had to approve of it. Then the terms of the easement contain appropriate provision for assignment of the easement to another entity authorized to hold conservation easements under the ORC in the event that the original grantee becomes unwilling or unable to ensure compliance with the provisions. So I haven't looked at that conservation easement, but I would assume that there is a provision that then allows either the township to come in and and monitor over it, or there's provision that it falls back to another entity that's allowed within the Ohio revised code. So that's kind of how these are managed.
So the township does not have any active way of monitoring whether or not the compliance is enforced. They rely on the HOA to determine compliance.
They absolutely have the right to go onto the property and inspect the property and enforce it themselves. They don't have to rely on the HOA. The HOA is required to, but the township also has the right to do it. At least as it's written in ours, I don't know if yours is written the same way, or yours was the result of a settlement, so it might be a little bit different, but.
Yeah, Wakefield, Wakefield's a little different. And first off, let me thank Nikki for uh circling me in on the email, because I was able to do some research and look into that situation. Um, Chris Colina, Hinkley Township trustee. And um, I did reach out to Mr. Simoti, um, he was not aware of the situation. And then I I personally met with Mr. Crane, and he was not aware of the situation. And and he seemed very genuine that um, that seemed to be an oversight. He says he was never notified of the um expiration of the filing. And um, and we all know his business model did change, uh, they were, they were purchased, address changes. I'm not, I can't really explain that, but he couldn't explain it either, other than the fact that he was not aware. Claims he did not receive any notification from the state of Ohio, and as soon as it was brought to his attention, he immediately filed. Um, I do know that he has been active in the subdivision. I do know that he's been in contact with uh some of the residents, they've done some plantings in the area as well. So they do appear to be monitoring that. Um, they are getting ready, um, almost, because there's enough homes in the area that they're getting ready to turn that over to the HLA. So it will be in the hands of the homeowners. And uh, at that point, I can tell you that as in, I'm sure your subdivision, it becomes um policed by the homeowners at that point, because they will, you know, when when I was on the HLA, I received phone calls, hey, this person is encroaching uh into the conservation area. Wakefield's different, because part of it is Cleveland Metro Parks. The other part of it happens to be HOA. So uh, the HOA handles the park that's theirs, Cleveland Metro Parks handles the park that's theirs. But um, the HOA does bring things to the uh Metro Park's attention and vice versa. Sometimes the park district will contact the HOA to let them know. So each one of our conservation, each one of the three conservations are set up separately, they're different. Um, they're each unique, and that's, you know, fully permissible in Hinkley Township. So hopefully that answers your question.
Absolutely, thank you, appreciate it. Um, in addition to the uh, those couple of emails, we also had a uh really good uh educational seminar with uh, with Denise Testa from Medina County Planning Commission came out. And uh, we actually had a nice-sized crowd for that, which was very nice. Um, explaining the the role of the Medina County Planning Commission, how they interact, um, what kind of um input that they provide. I believe just about everyone was able to attend. Um, so you guys all know what was covered. Um, and I hope everyone got a fair amount out of there. And I hope everyone got a fair amount out of that. It was great seeing Lindsay over at Medina County Planning Mission Commission meeting last evening. And at that meeting, they did vote on the the Cabala Farms subdivision that they voted to approve with modifications. As I had stated shortly before the we brought the meeting to order tonight, it's approved with modifications. They have not yet applied for a permit with the township. And there are quite a few modifications that are going to be necessary and and adjustments that I believe are going to be necessary to comply with the modifications provided by the Medina County Planning Commission. So that's something that might be coming down the plate in in the future. Aside from that, that pretty much clears it up on my end. Anything for you, Marcus?
No, I I spoke with Suzanne and I asked her she if she had any ideas as to what she's seen come through the office that we might want to start discussing and she said she she had generated a list about two years ago or so and that she'll provide that to us so that we can look and see if there's anything else that we might want to add to our business list, but she didn't have time to provide it yet, so.
Right, thank you. Mr. Schneider?
I'm good.
Mr. Manley?
I have no further comment, though. Thank you.
Andrew?
Good.
Lindsay?
Mouthset.
All right, trustee Kalina, anything for you?
Yes. We have several members whose terms will expire at the conclusion of this year and that happens to be Mr. Manley's term as well as, of course, both of our alternates because those are annual 12 month terms. So I would ask you to please notify the board of trustees of your intentions regarding your terms and in terms of if you are planning, if you have a desire to be reappointed, please send the board of trustees an email or you can write me a note that you would like to be reappointed and then the board of trustees will consider that when they handle that at their organizational meeting.
Thank you, sir.
That's it. Thank you.
Trustee Augustine, anything for you?
No, not at this time.
And is there any other comment from the public?
I will say, I think at our meeting, we said November 15th. Right, trustee Augustine?
I believe we did.
Yes, November, by November 15th. It would be so kind as to send us. Thank you.
Ron Weyda, W E Y D A, 1575 Cooter Road. And I'm just here to kind of speak with my experiences with short term rentals and long term rentals. I've done both of them. I've done short term rentals for the past 20 years before you even had the Airbnbs and VRBOs that that you have referred to. And before the models of VRBO and Airbnb came along, it was it was a headache to do. And they have a really good business model of checks and balances, especially with within Airbnb. It's been an excellent site to work with. And the people that come and stay in short term rentals, it's, I don't even hardly know they're they're much less a neighbor. Now, they don't come to like hang out in the yard and hang out in the house. They're just looking for a place to hang their hat, spend the night, take a shower, and then they're going to the Cuyahoga Valley National Park, which is huge, they're going Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. I mean, they got plans for their couple of days here. They're they're not looking to to stay and bother their neighbors or anything like that. You don't even really, like I said, you don't even know they're there. Long term rentals that I've had have been more of a pain because they don't look after the house. There was no checks and balances with them and I've had them bother their neighbors and that sort of thing. I don't even do long term rentals anymore just because it's just just really a headache. And I've had some great experiences and I get a lot of recurring people coming back all the time. So they review me as a host and I review them as a guest. So when somebody wants to stay, they kind of apply to stay and you can look and you can read everything about them. Anybody has said about them is what type of guests that they are and you don't have to accept them. Same thing with the renters. So people, if you go, so you're talking about researching, so I suggest you go onto these sites, become familiar with them, or I would be glad to even work with you to help show you, to navigate you through some of this. It's it's very interesting and it's very well put together, especially during COVID. They were really worried about the parties, you know, the parties are are the thing that's people tend to really worry about. And they won't rent out to like very short term during the the big holidays when you'd expect like Halloween or something, they won't, you know, they're not going to rent out to people during that time of year. So like I said, the whole checks and balances, if you look and you go on and you read everything, you know, just, you know, sign up, get an account on there. I've also used it, my wife and I use it all the time when we travel, Airbnb. I recommend it. I mean, we've stayed in some great houses, especially we go on Florida every year, we get a beach house right on the beach for, you know, you feel like you're part of the neighborhood. It's it's really cool, you know, and as getting out of your hotel room and going down the elevator and walking across parking lot, you know, you just get up and you go. So just my recommendation to you is as you look into it, become familiar with it because it is a really good business model. I mean, I can't stress how well that was and if you ever have any questions on it, like I said, I'd be glad to to share my experiences over the past 20 years. I worked with hundreds or maybe thousands of people between my my rentals, so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience?
Frank, 5 River Road. I second that.
Right? Thank you. All right, if there's no other comment, then we'll, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm so moved.
Moved by Ms. Drew?
I'll second whoever.
Seconded by Mr. Fisher. All in favor? Aye. None opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 8:36.